The presence of a quorum.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo.
Present.
Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Counselor Linian. Counselor Murphy.
Present.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. Counselor Yancey. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I have the honor of introducing City Councilor Mark Siomo, who is going to, after a nationwide search, has brought us an invoker. Today's invoker is our city clerk, Counselor Maureen Feeny, who will deliver the opening prayer. I'd ask all in attendance to please rise, all councilors, all guests. After our city clerk delivers the prayer, we will all participate in a salute to the flag of Pledge of Allegiance. So please remain standing. City Clerk, Maureen Feeny.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to all of you, God bless. Spirit of life and love which moves through us and through all the world, may we this day be grateful for the gift of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life we have and hold is to us a mystery and precious. May we this day be reminded of the responsibilities we carry, not so that we are intimidated or overwhelmed, but so that we may be true to them, so that we may be faithful in carrying them forward. May we this day maintain a sense of perspective, remembering who we are, engaging the tasks at hand, but understanding our limitations, understanding our own shortcomings, forgiving ourselves and others if we fall short of perfection. May we this day be inspired, be filled with new breath, be filled with new enthusiasm, be ready to see fresh opportunity and new perspectives, unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. And may we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others, the virtues of caring and concern, the virtue of honesty and respect, the virtues of charity, industry, and patience. And may all the members of this honorable body maintain a high sense of their calling. Remember that they are invested here with honor and call to be a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for your beautiful reading. Please join with us as we salute the flag. Thank you, everyone. I have a couple of announcements. I want to recognize that we're joined by Nicole Cifori and a group from City Year who's here in the audience. Let's give them a round of applause and welcome them. Boston City Council. And I would call Counselor Presley to the podium. She has a presentation and a guest from Birmingham, I believe, or...
Okay. All right. Well, actually, I wanted to bring to the podium to say a couple of words. We have an honored guest, Counselor Woman Sheila Tyson, who was only elected three weeks ago. All right, please join us. And she has left a very generous token on everyone's desk. So I'll just invite you to bring greetings and with the honor to have you with us this morning.
Good afternoon. I'm Sheila Tyson from Birmingham, Alabama, and I'm here with the American Health Association during a presentation. And when I decided to come, I looked up the city council, because I just became a city councilwoman, and I seen Ms. Presley's bio, and I just looked her up. I'm part of an organization also called the Black Women's Roundtable. And anytime we do presentations, we go into the cities, we look for incredible black women for role models for our young black females that's in the United States. I bring greetings from the Mayor William Bell of Birmingham, Alabama, to Ms. Presley. We are right now in the movement of our 50th anniversary for Birmingham Civil Rights Movement. From turning our county commission, we was up on the commission 50 years ago, now we are up on the city council. Also, we are going through our 50th anniversary for the bombing of the three little girls on 16th Street Baptist Church. I have a letter from the City of Birmingham Mayor, Ms. Presley, and I have a crystal award from the City of Birmingham that we give to special guests, and we voted and we decided that you were our special guest, and I'm coming to give this to you.
Thank you so much.
Presented by William Bell Senior, City of Birmingham Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And I also have a letter from Maxine Parker, which is a black female woman, which is the president of Birmingham City Council. So here you go, another.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is a surprise. I was inviting her up because she's visiting us, and so I wanted to make sure we welcomed her with open arms. I'm very humbled by this acknowledgement to those whom much is given, much is required, and I will not forget that. Thank you so much.
And it is a surprise. She did not know it, and...
I just want you all to know, I would not be like, "And let me bring up someone to honor me."
She really did not know. This is my first time ever speaking to her. It really...
Five minutes ago.
We just met five minutes ago, and I just seen her on the internet, and like I told you, this is just something that I do when I go into cities, because I do a lot of presentations. And I am definitely honored to come here and for you being the first black woman that says it all right there. You know, you are going down in history, you really are. You're going down in history, and we have young girls that will be looking up to you as a role model, and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Can everyone come up, and we'll just do a picture with our other guests? Oh, yes. And this is how I'm just bumbling here today. And we also would like to present you with a token of our gratitude and to salute and honor you on being a fellow in public service. We present this to you, our council president, Steve Murphy, and just a small token of our appreciation, and we look forward to visiting with you and seeing you again. All right, take care. Okay, you want to hold that? Okay. Thank you. I'm never at a loss for words, but you got me today. Okay. [laughing] Thank you so much. All right, it's very nice. Okay.
One's yours, right?
Okay. I don't know. Once in my life, I'm neutral.
I just wanted to let you know that in spite of what's happened over the last three weeks with the media in Boston thinking that they run the city council, they were rebuffed yesterday. And we received a letter, my office received a letter from the arbitrator. Dear Mr. Murphy, I write in response to your recent joint request for an opinion explaining the rationale of the interest arbitration award in JLMC 12-32P, Boston Police Patrolman's Association and City of Boston. I will provide you with a written opinion supporting the award by November the 12th, addressing the substantive issues that remain unresolved at the conclusion of the hearing, including the wage package, the Safe Street Teams provision, and other issues that may be relevant for the city council's deliberations. Very truly yours, Timothy P. Buckaloo Arbitrator. So I just wanted everybody to know that we are in our 60-day calendar. We are moving forward as expected on that, and we did not bow to the timetable of the Boston Globe, or the Boston Herald, or WCVB, or any other media outlet that thinks that they run this institution. They don't, we do, and we're doing our due diligence. I just want to say thank you very much to all my colleagues. Thank you. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor.
1760, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept from the trustees of the Public Library of the City of Boston certain property known as the Orient Heights Building located at 18 Barnes Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts, 02128, Ward 1, parcel number 043820000, and the care and custody, management, and control thereof is hereby transferred to the Public Facilities Commission pursuant to its authority under the Acts of 1966, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 642, Section 31.
Docket 1760 will be referred to Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Docket number 1761, message and order authorizing the Police Department to accept and expend a donation of $2,138.60 from the estate of Jean M. Fink for the purpose of furthering education for law enforcement in the name of Joseph Patrick Manning.
Counselor Ross moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1761. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1761 has passed.
Docket number 1762, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Barbara Wenonhome as a member of the St. Petroleth Area Architectural Conservation District Commission for term expiring on June 30, 2015.
Docket 1762 will be referred to Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Docket number 1763, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 9, 2013.
Docket 1763 will be placed on file.
Would you like me to...
You can read them all, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket number 1764, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Margaret A. McKenna to the Boston School Committee for a term expiring January 5, 2015. Docket number 1765, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Christopher Biner as interim chief of Human Services and executive director of the Boston Centers for Youth and Families effective November 4, 2013. Docket number 1766, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of James Sullivan as the interim chief of advocacy and strategic investment effective November 4, 2013. Docket number 1767, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Charles Button as a member and chairman of the Conservation Commission for a term expiring November 1, 2016. Docket number 1768, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of John P. Sullivan, J.A.R., as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term expiring November 1, 2016. Docket number 1769, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Stephen T. Cooneyan as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term expiring November 1, 2016. Docket number 1770, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Vivian Lee as a member of the Conservation Commission for term expiring November 1, 2016. Docket number 1771, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jacob Kritzner as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term expiring November 1, 2016. Docket number 1772, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Wilson as a member of the Conservation Commission for term expiring November 2016.
Docket 1764 through 1772 will be placed on file. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1773, Counselor Lamatina offered the following order that the city council approve, the designation of the East Boston Branch of the Boston Public Library as the Mayor Thomas M. Menino Community Room.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Sal Lamatina on docket 1773.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Friends of the East Boston Libraries and the people of East Boston, I'm asking to pass and suspend this order approving designation of the Thomas M. Menino Community Room at the new East Boston Branch Library. We had the opening on Saturday. It's such a beautiful, beautiful library. If I would ask all of you to please visit the library. Hundreds of people turned out for the opening of the library, but also to honor the mayor, who for 20 years served this city and the people of East Boston, who are very, very proud of Tom Menino being the first Italian mayor in the city of Boston. And we're very, very proud of that. And I started East Boston Pride Day 25 years ago, when a lot of people were moving out of East Boston, and he became mayor, and all those reasons why people left, vacant stores, schools, parks, things had changed in that neighborhood, and a lot had to do with the mayor. So I ask you to pass and suspend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Chair recognizes Counselor Mike Ross on the same matter, or...
That must have been left over from...
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1773. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1773 has passed.
Docket number 1774, Counselor Consalvo offered the following order that the city council approve, the designation of the Hyde Park Branch of the Boston Public Library as Mayor Thomas M. Menino Learning Lab.
Chair recognizes Counselor Rob Consalvo on docket 1774.
Not to be outdone in Hyde Park, Mr. President. The second member of the Italian caucus rises to a...
Can you top this?
Ask that. I proudly put forth today a order naming the designation of the Tom Menino Learning Lab in the Hyde Park Branch Library, and this is a little bit different in the sense of this is also a request coming from the Friends of the Hyde Park Library, who are an incredible group out in Hyde Park, who do wonderful things for our Hyde Park Library, volunteering countless hours to improve the library and enhance the library and make the library accessible and available for people in the neighborhoods. This room, though, is going to be a new learning lab. It's going to be a first-time learning lab out in the Hyde Park Library, where we're going to transform a vacant room into this new learning lab. I want to thank Sam Tyler from the Municipal Research Bureau, who's in the audience. They have provided the gift to the city that will fund the renovations to the room to create the first-ever learning lab out in the Hyde Park Library. So we thank the Municipal Research Bureau for that generous donation, and it's truly fitting, and the Friends of the Hyde Park Library, as they always do have it right, to name this room after our mayor, who has done so much for our city and so much for our libraries, particularly in Hyde Park as well. So we asked that we do this, and I would like to ask suspension and passage, Mr. President.
Counselor Consalvo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1774. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1774 has passed.
Docket number 1775, Counselor Yancey offered the following order for hearing regarding Veolia Transportation's labor practices in the City of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey on docket 1775.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Obviously, I want to ask that this be referred to the appropriate committee, but I rise to ask each of our colleagues to maintain an open mind about what's going on with school buses, school bus drivers, Veolia, and others, who were very disturbed, as I was, on the morning of October 8, 2013, when our children were not picked up. I was actually outraged by that, so much so, Mr. President, that I went down to the Freeport School Bus Yards to talk to the school bus drivers personally, to find out what was going on, and to personally intervene and urge our bus drivers to return to their buses and pick up their children for their afternoon return home. I learned a lot, Mr. President, during that impromptu visit of mine that morning. I learned that Veolia, the new company that had, well, the company that has a new contract, has in fact been in violation of the contract that they signed on an interim basis. I learned also that routing of buses created tremendous problems for our students. They had unreasonable times between pickups, almost assuming like there are no other vehicles on the road. And worse than that, Mr. President, I find that I found out that a number of the school bus drivers themselves were being mistreated by this new company. So we obviously hear one side of the story, and I heard one side of the story before I paid that visit, but things have escalated since that time. And while I have zero influence with anyone in this city, not to mention any union or individuals, I believe that these bus drivers continue to provide services under unfair working conditions, and there were several matters pending before the National Labor Relations Board in Washington during the federal shutdown that inhibited the resolve of some of these grievances. So I just put this particular hearing order request in context, not to urge anyone to jump to conclusions one way or the other, but to bring the parties here. I also endeavored to talk to the company that Tuesday morning, and was not only rebuffed by the person who held up human relations, she didn't seem to care who I was. She just came up without any niceties at all and just ordered me to leave. And my request was to have a sit-down between the company and the school bus drivers to resolve the issue so our children could in fact be picked up. But instead, the reaction was to just tell me to leave and to call the police, which they did, and two very fine police officers did show up. One is now the interim police commissioner, and the other is the captain of CE 11, both friends of mine. But I cooperated, but I also called the interim school superintendent and asked him to intervene so that these bus drivers can return to work that Tuesday afternoon, not the next Wednesday morning, but that Tuesday afternoon. And to a person, the bus drivers agreed to do that, but we again were rebuffed at that point by the interim superintendent, who said, "No, the mayor has already issued his press release. We are not going to allow the bus drivers to pick up the children for that evening run." I was astounded, Mr. President, that was the reaction. Again, I'm just one person. I have no authority, and I wasn't intervening in the contract, but I had deep concern about those children being left at their schools this time with no way of getting back. But the mayor had his game plan in place, the Veolia company had their game plan in place. In fact, they actually put chains on the fence to prevent any bus driver from picking up the children, to at least assist in the effort. So again, that's just by way of context. I share all the concerns of our colleagues, and particularly the parents who were left in a lurch that morning, but I also believe that there's more to the story than what we've been hearing in the media, and I ask that all of our members attend the hearing, hopefully it will be scheduled expeditiously, to get the other side of the story and to get the Veolia's side of the story as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. The matter will be referred to Committee on Labor, Youth Affairs, and Health. Personnel orders.
Docket number 1776, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employee Rebecca Aralano.
Counselor Arroyo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1776. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1776 is approved.
Docket number 1777, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Jackson offered the following order.
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1777. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1777 has passed.
Docket number 1778, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1778. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1778 has passed. I've been informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters in her hands, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first edition.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counselor Arroyo ordered that effective Saturday, November 2nd...
Counselor Arroyo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first personnel order, late file. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. First personnel order has passed.
Counselor Stephen J. Murphy for Counselor Arroyo offered the following...
Counselor Arroyo moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second personnel late-file matter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The ayes have it. The second late-file matter has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Chair recognizes Counsel Mark Ciomo.
Docket number 1599, page 18 of 19 of the green sheets.
Madam Clerk, would you read docket 1599 on page 18 of the green sheets?
I believe it's on the front. I don't see it. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry, Counselor, excuse me. In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 1599, sponsored by the mayor, message and order approving an appropriation of $4,137,330 to the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the construction of the Joseph Quincy Upper School, Boston Arts Academy, projected to be located at Parcel 25 in Chinatown. It was referred to the committee on October 9th, 2013.
Chair recognizes Counsel Mark Ciomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on October 29th. We had testimony from Michael Galvin from Property and Construction Management, Carlton Jones from BPS Facilities, Joe Mulligan from Property and Construction Management, Special Advisor Michael Kontampasis, and Principal Wong from the Quincy Upper. We were cresting the $4.1 million as a feasibility study for the purpose of paying the cost of the feasibility study and schematic design work for the proposed construction of the Joint Quincy Upper School, Boston Arts Academy, on Parcel 25 near South Station. The proposal will build customized classrooms and space according to the mission of each respective school, allowing the schools to share common resources such as a gym, library, auditorium, and science labs. The school will serve a total of 1,360 students, Quincy Upper's 650 students in grades 6 through 12, and the Boston Arts Academy's 710 students in grades 9 through 12. Both schools have worked with the Mass School Building Authority for funding and anticipate a reimbursement rate of over 74%, resulting in the net cost of a little shy of $1 million for the feasibility and schematic design for the city of Boston. It will be reviewed, the schematic design will be reviewed by the MSBA and approval in early to mid-2014. City of Boston's Property and Construction Management stated if approved, total construction cost to be estimated around $260 million. A 99-year lease from Mass Department of Transportation with the cost of $1 as a nominal fee for one acre of land. The city of Boston must comply with the mitigation requirements to build a deck over the on-ramp tunnel for the abutting expressway. And construction is scheduled to be completed for occupancy in September 2017. Both schools have engaged in discussions with their school communities, and many families support this proposal as it meets the needs of their respective schools, and it will serve families in the downtown Boston area. I recommend that the full council support this and be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Counsel Ciomo. Chair recognizes City Counsel Mike Ross.
...issue, which has now really gone on for two years. This is that issue. This is that school issue that came up during the access to excellence discussion that we all had here, which I think was a difficult time for, certainly for me, but probably for the council. And at that time, if you recall, Mr. President, I said that I think it's a mistake to move the Fenway High School out of the Boston Arts Academy so that the Boston Arts Academy can grow there and displace the Mission K-8 School on Allegheny Street. And I asked my colleagues if they would just wait one year so we can get it right. And unfortunately, you know, we're not having the advantage of being able to see into the future. The council did what it thought was right, and we didn't. We moved forward. And a school community was displaced. Mission Hill is down, a popular elementary school, and Fenway High was told that it had to move. Well, now we're looking at a loan order that completely invalidates that three-school move. It never needed to happen, and it shouldn't have happened. It's unfortunate, but it's not irrevocable, and it's something that we can easily fix. I think that in the end, the Boston Arts Academy moving to Chinatown, to the Theater District, is a great move. That's the move we really were waiting for. Quincy Upper being able to expand, that makes a lot of sense. This is what everyone really wanted. It's a bold decision, it's a bold move. So I support that. I'm asking my colleagues to consider an amendment. And what the amendment would do is, well, here, one more thing. The Mission K-8 School is, has been moved to Child Street in Jamaica Plain. And it was a tough move for those parents, many of which didn't want to see it happen. But they moved, and they worked with the city. They worked with Mike Galvin, they worked with architects, and they got a great building out of it, and they're happy. And they don't want to move back. They've already been displaced. Fenway High is still at Ipswich Street, at 174 Ipswich Street. If they move to Mission Hill on Allegheny Street, Mission Hill will lose that opportunity to reclaim an elementary school on Allegheny Street, which it had for decades, and there'll be an empty building next to Fenway Park. Now, I think we all know exactly what will happen to that empty building. That's gone. That will no longer be a community-serving asset to that community. It will no longer be a school. Now, there can be promises made, but anything can be changed. What I would ask my colleagues to consider is to put Fenway High in the very place they wanted to be when this all began, as represented by their school community, by their teachers, by their principals, and leave them at 174 Ipswich Street. Let them expand and grow there. Let that be the quality Fenway High School we know it can and will and should be. And leave the Mission Hill School on Allegheny Street empty. Allow that to soon be an elementary school. Do not force Mission K-8 to come back from Child Street. And that is the thrust of this amendment. Knowing that we're going to have a new mayor, knowing that we're going to have a new school department, and knowing that we're going to have a new council, all I have is the ability to add language to this amendment. And I would hope that that language in the form of an amendment would be supported, hopefully by the entire council. In some odd way, this might actually be the best solution. I had an opportunity to sit down and discuss this with the mayor yesterday. I think it's a fair proposal, and I hope that you can all support it. At this point, I would ask, Mr. President, if it's the appropriate time to have the amendment circulated to my colleagues for review.
I'd ask the clerk to read the amendment and have it circulated at this time.
Thank you.
Clerk, please read the amendment.
Amendment of Counsel Michael Ross to docket number 1599. Counselor Ross moves to amend docket number 1599 by adding at the end of the following paragraph, "Provided that if appropriation is approved, Fenway High shall remain at the 174 Ipswich Street facility location that is currently occupied with Boston Arts Academy, and provided further that a K-8 school shall be installed at the Allegheny Street location. The school department shall also be instructed to provide assurances to Fenway High for the continued use of the facility at the 174 Ipswich Street location, filed in council November 6, 2013."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The amendment needs a second. It's seconded by Counsel Jackson. The amendment is before us now. The loan order in the amended form is now currently before the council. Chair recognizes Counsel Ross.
Sorry, thank you. Just one last thing I wanted to add. During the hearing, the testimony at the City Council meeting, a representative from Fenway High testified. She was a board member of Fenway High, and she said that she would rather go to Allegheny Street because she can be guaranteed that the building won't be sold out from underneath her, essentially, and that she wanted those reassurances. I talked to Peggy Kemp, the principal of Fenway High, and I said, you know, I asked her, wouldn't she want to stay there? And she said she would want to stay there if she knew that the building would be underneath, and it wasn't constantly some breath on the back of her neck that, hey, let's have you move so we can have this building. And that's why I included the language for the continued use of the facility at 174 Ipswich Street location. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ross. There are a lot of lights. Go back to Counsel Ciomo.
Right. We heard the same testimony, not just from one person, but several people from Fenway that have embraced this move. I believe that it's actually out to bid right now for the renovation of the former Mission K-8 for Fenway. I also, you know, going back to that very tough vote, I agree, it was a very tough vote for most people. But one of the main reasons the move from the Mission to the, what is now the Agassi, the new Mission K-8, was to expand that access. It gave more seats for that Mission School. And the folks from the Mission School have embraced their new location, and it's serving more elementary school children. So I would just say that, you know, I read this as is, and that's how I'm proposing it.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Ciomo. Chair recognizes Counsel Ross.
Mr. President, I think the headmaster has had a, in response to that question, I think the headmaster has had a couple of tough years with this process. She works for the school department, she reports to the superintendent, who ultimately reports to the mayor and the administration, which is carrying out a plan that I'm trying to stop. The Fenway High community filled the school committee chambers with every student, teacher, and faculty member begging the school committee to stay at 174 Ipswich Street. I don't expect Peggy Kemp to be championing this move. I expect her to support what the administration is asking to happen, and I would not ask for her to be put in this situation. I think keeping Fenway High School in the building they asked to be kept in, which they've been in for all these years, is not an unfair treatment to Fenway High. They will be allowed to expand in it, they will be allowed to thrive in it, they will be allowed to use that building. To shove them into an elementary school that we're outfitting with a $12 million cafetorium to make a move that was ill-suited to begin with, which is even more ill-suited today, happen, that is not wise, and that is the check and balance that this council has always had to play. Just because someone is saying that we should go along with a plan has never been what I've experienced on this body as recently as a couple weeks ago, as I was shown by one of my colleagues. So I am asking my colleagues to change the plan that has been submitted by the administration that would move the Fenway High into an elementary school and cost $12 million needlessly. If it's the will of this body or this administration to continue to build the cafetorium at Allegheny Street, then so be it. But I don't think it needs and requires the Fenway High School to be in it. I think the Fenway High to be able to stay where it is and expand in place is what would be the best interest of my district and of our school department. I also want to point out that my successor, who was elected yesterday, Josh Zachem, has City Council-elect for District 8, has that exact position and has written it in writing and has sent that position to the chair of this committee. And so it will be consistent, and if you'd like, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to furnish you a copy of that letter. But it basically says, "I would like to see Fenway High stay where it is and allow Mission Hill to one day have an elementary school like we all want in the communities that we represent." Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ross. Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to oppose the amendment. I mean, I personally have been working on the project for the Quincy Upper School for over 10 years. And for, and I, you know, whether I agree with Counselor Ross on his intention and position, that's one thing, but I think this matter is quite clear the way it is, and that I think we should be moving both of these forward. The Boston Arts Academy has been something that has been scheduled and tried to identify a site and location in my district also, which has been on the plate for six years. So we're in a position now to vote as is, and so I'll be opposing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I expressed my concerns about this project at the public hearing. I restated it here today. We, unfortunately, acting without the benefit of a fully thought-out school facilities plan. And that has left us in a lurch, Mr. President, because we seem to be jumping from target of opportunity to target of opportunity, as if we somehow know where we are going with regards to our schools. And June of 2013, we received a communications, all of us, from the former superintendent, at least sign, a memo signed by the former superintendent of schools, who stated in that memo, in reaction to a loan order that I have pending in the City Council for $115 million for the purpose of building a new high school on the grounds of the former Boston State Hospital site, 15 acres of land in the college campus-like environment right next to the mass biologic lab, right next to the nature center, an ideal location according to Mike Kontampasis for a high school. In response to that, this memo went on to say that the building of a new high school in the city of Boston would be, and I'm paraphrasing, a poor use of public's dollars. I stated my outrage to that statement when we received it back in June. So here we are now, where we've heard from Carlton Jones, who heads up the facilities department for the schools, and I asked him, was this plan in the works when that memo was sent to him? And he candidly admitted, at the public hearing, you can review the tape, that no, it was not, that they did not secure this particular location. So then I asked, well, how much would this new high school cost? And during that public hearing, he stated it would be, it's estimated to be $260 million. So, well, that's very interesting, because I was told that one of the reasons that my colleagues, including the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, refused to support the building of a high school on the Boston State Hospital grounds was that it was too So if $115 million is too expensive, what does the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee have to say about a $260 million project on one acre of land downtown Boston compared to a beautiful campus-like environment of 14 acres of land? I've yet to get a response, and I don't expect one, unfortunately. But what I really rise to say, Mr. President, is that I'm not so sure it would be prudent and responsible for us to make this type of commitment, even with regards to the feasibility study, because at that point, the project would be a fait accompli, with all the comprehensive facilities planned. And with all due respect to my colleague from District 8, I believe that the high school students at Fenway High should have a high school building. And that building where they're currently located at was a warehouse. I believe it was actually used as a parking garage as well. Now, I'm very familiar with that building because my second son graduated from Boston Latin Academy when it was located in the Ipswich Street facility. It was inadequate then, is it inadequate now? And it's likely to continue to be inadequate because it would not contain basic facilities for high school students. So I'm concerned that we take that action. And the other factor, Mr. President, is that we have a new mayor, we're going to have a new city council in January, and I'm not sure we want to handcuff the future administration with this type of project. Again, target of opportunity, I agree, there is. I agree, there are certainly some advantages to having a high school near the theater district for the Boston Arts Academy. I actually think that's appropriate. And I hock him back to the request made by then-mayor-elect Thomas M. Menino, calling for a Blue Ribbon Commission report to establish a facilities plan for the Boston Public Schools. That report was completed in 1996, and it called for the construction of two new high schools, not one, but two. And since that time, we've built zero new high schools. We've put high school students in elementary school buildings. And in that same memo, and I'll conclude here, Mr. President, in that same memo that we received back in June, the argument was that we had a surplus of high school seats. You read it, Mr. President. So when I asked Mr. Jones, what was his definition of a high school seat? He basically said, anywhere a high school is sitting. It could be in a corridor, it could be in a garage, it could be in the elementary school building. So then I asked, well, do we have a surplus of seats in high school buildings, buildings constructed for the purpose of high schools? And he said, no. In fact, he agreed that there's more than 3,000 Boston Public High School students who are attending their high school experience in substandard buildings, including the Ipswich Street property. So I don't believe it will be prudent on the part of this body a few, you know, less than two months before the new mayor takes office, without the benefit of a well-thought-out facilities plan, to make this type of commitment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Yancy. We have several more that want to speak on this matter. Chair recognizes John Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I guess I would just say briefly, I think I'm going to reiterate some of my good colleagues' comments from Dorchester. My issue here is the lack of the long-term plan, which I believe we're supposed to be briefed on next week. And I know it's being introduced at school committee tonight. And so I, you know, so I take issue with the notion of voting for another sort of piecemeal major capital project without understanding the broader context of where it stands with the long-term facilities plan. And that is, that's my concern with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Connolly. Chair recognizes Council Tito Jackson.
Mr. Chair, I rise, Mr. President, I rise to speak on this amendment. I don't think it's a radical idea that a high school go into a high school building. I don't think it, I think what the radical idea is that we continue, as Council Yancy has brought up, to jam folk who are my size into elementary schools. We are continuing that move. And as Council Connolly brought up, this all happens outside of the context overarching plan. We're talking about $260 million. And also, we also, many of us were in the room when we were at English High School as there was a fight over Boston Latin Academy, when Boston Latin Academy was going to be moved to Hyde Park. And we all got calls, Council Connolly went out to the school, but we all got calls about a fight over a building, one of the most basic building blocks of a school. We had two of the most connected, well-meaning school communities calling us and pulling us in two different directions based on a school building. We have to do better. We have to have a plan. And to be honest, we are not the right people or the best people, the most qualified folks, to figure out a facilities plan. We're not. We're not the proper body for that. But we ask and demand that the school department do that. And yeah, you're doing it tomorrow night, but it's about a year ago, year and a half ago, that we asked. Just let us know what you're going to do. Help us understand what direction you're going to move in. And then, in your plan, we know we're $600 million behind in repairs and maintenance. What's the best thing to do in that? What are your priorities? How do we step forward and do right by all of our kids? And then on top of this, if we're moving to neighborhood schools, where do the kids live? That's a really good question. So are we building where the kids live? Is that what we're doing? So I agree with Council Ross's assertion that Fenway should stay in the Fenway. I also would like to say that we should not sell any school buildings. We should put a moratorium on the sale of any school building in the city of Boston, because we know that we have a group of young people who are now coming into the system. And one of the things that we had to do last year was open school buildings in the middle of the school year, which is probably one of the most inefficient things that we could ever do. Let's get it together. Let's figure out how to do what we haven't done in the past, which is have a proactive plan for our young people relative, and I appreciate what happens in the classroom, but the most basic thing that we can do is provide them a building that's warm, that doesn't get them sick, that's not falling down. That's what we can do. And that's what we should do. I agree with, and Mission Hill, I have to let you know, Mission Hill is still part of Roxbury on the map. I agree with there being another elementary school in Roxbury. And I agree with the Fenway expansion. But the other point, and Council Yancy has a point, how do we say that $260 million is too expensive, I'm sorry, $115 million is too expensive one place, and $260 million isn't too expensive on the other side? We still have an opportunity to continue that conversation. Understand what we're voting on here today and for the public. This is not $260 million. Hopefully, it'd be a lot longer conversation that we're going to have than today. What we're voting on is a feasibility study that looks at the feasibility of this possibly happening. Understand, that's what we're doing today. We are not voting on the full plan of a $260 million school. So there's a distinction between what we are voting on today and what will happen if this passes in the future. Let's make that distinction. We need to make that distinction. But school department, help us out here. Help our kids out here. Help our community out here. Let's get it together, figure out a plan. We're $600 million behind. Let's figure out our priorities and do what needs to be done for the future, the most valuable part of our city, which is our children. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm inclined to support this amendment offered by my friend from District 8. I do have a specific question, and I don't know if there's a member of the council can answer this. I'll ask it through you. But if anyone knows the answer, is there currently any plans for the Fenway building, where Fenway High MBA, to, where we, not to include your amendment, what would happen to that building? Is there any plans already on deck to what would happen if someone has an answer? And I'm not looking for speculation. I just want to know if there's actually an answer to that.
There is no plan at all. But with the building vacant and with it being located where it is, I believe that it will be used for some other purpose. Look, I mean, I hear the conversation that's occurring in this room, and if it's the will of this body to say, let's wait until there's a planning process that's real before we move forward with this plan, first of all, I, you know, I can appreciate that perspective. But I wouldn't ask that you divorce from that, this amendment. This amendment, to answer your question, will always ensure that a school is in that building. And what seems to be happening here is that the administration is telling my colleagues that Fenway High wants to move now. But Mission K-8 didn't want to move. And Mission Hill didn't want to lose its elementary school. And so to conveniently plan by finding that voice that is saying what you want at the time isn't right either. Fenway High is in 174 Ipswich Street now. They asked this council and this school committee to just let them stay there. And now we're trying to dress this up and act as if everything is all good, when in fact, we know that what really should have happened was one year ago. We just waited a year, and none of this would be at issue. So now I'm coming back to my colleagues, many of which who said to themselves and to others that they made a bad call on this one. I'm asking them, here's your chance to redo. Here's your chance to help us get it right. Just leave the Fenway High in its building. That shouldn't be controversial. That shouldn't be difficult. And that shouldn't be held against this community. And one of the reasons why I'm standing in front of you now is because I won't be here next year, while my successor will. You know, it's going to be a brand-new day and a brand-new issue. You know, this is one of those things that I would have liked to have cleaned up before I go. I don't understand, you know, why someone needs to be dogmatic on this one, Mr. President. And, pardon me? It is a long answer to this question.
It's just a question. Thank you for the answer. You know, I'm going to be supporting this amendment. I supported, you know, the amendment originally offered by the good colleague from District 8 that would have kept the Mission Hill school in Mission Hill. In the first place, I considered this to be just consistent. The idea that Fenway High would stay in the Fenway seems like a great idea to me. You know, the idea that we have a building now in Mission Hill that allows an opportunity for the next city council, the next administration, to do something with, and maybe that something is bringing an elementary school back to a district that sorely needs elementary schools. And I had a slight concern, having heard my colleague from Districts 2, and I agree with him, we do not want to stop the progress of the BAA and the Quincy School getting the upgrade they sorely need in Chinatown. I'm just having a hard time seeing how this amendment would stop that progress. And so because of that, I feel that I can support this amendment and still support the Boston Arts Academy and the Quincy Upper, which is the school my mom retired from. I know how sorely they want an upgrade, to have the upgrade that they deserve in Chinatown, allow Fenway to keep a high school in the neighborhood, and allow for the possibility that the next administration, next city council, could bring an elementary school back to District 8, which is a district we all know sorely needs more elementary schools. And so with that, I'll be voting in the affirmative if there's a vote today.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Chair recognizes Council John Connolly.
Thanks, Mr. President. It's awesome to be back in the city council engaged in this debate. That was my worst vote ever in my time on the council. I deeply regret that vote, as I've stated many times publicly. And I do believe we should have a neighborhood school in Mission Hill, a K-8 school. I absolutely believe in that. So I'll figure it out if we move for a vote. My bigger issue here is this. We're not making decisions about school facilities right now as part of a long-term plan. And that compromises the ability of the Boston Public Schools to make decisions for all of the kids in the smartest way possible. When we, when we do, on all of these, and I've got mixed voting records on all of them, when we do a downtown school, which is sorely needed, but it's not part of a long-term facilities plan, that puts us in a place where we're not going to be able to think holistically when we vote for Mattapan High School, but it's not part of a broader plan. We're not, we're not going to be able to think holistically about all of the kids. And if we vote for this piece, even remove my good colleague's amendment, just take it as is. I don't think it's a smart thing for us to be voting for. It's another capital allocation that's piecemeal. It's not part of a broader plan. When we've got crumbling high school facilities, we've got crumbling facilities, period, and we're not thinking about how we're going to do this for all of the kids. Now, I know they're going to present the plan at the, I think, school committee tonight. I know we're supposed to be briefed next week. My sense is, based on people I've talked to internally in BPS, this plan is going to be about par for the course for BPS and probably is not going to suffice. But there is an opportunity with the new administration, the next superintendent, to really get this right. And so that's what just concerns me here, whether it's voting on the amendment, whether it's voting as is. We're taking votes in a piecemeal fashion. We're not connecting at all. And we're looking at a system that's got somewhere in the order of over a billion dollars in capital needs, whether it's deferred maintenance, new renovations, or new construction needs. And so where is the plan that's going to say, we're going to get a Mission Hill, K-8 here, and at the same time, we're prioritizing this in the South End, and this in West Roxbury, and this in Roxbury, and this in Jamaica Plain, so that we're thinking about meeting the needs of all the kids here? That's just my broader concern every time these land in our laps. And I take my good colleague from Roxbury's points. I think I agree with 90% of them. One thing I'll just say is, maybe a $200 million building ultimately, and this is just a $4 million decision. $4 million is $4 million. And too often in BPS, we throw a million here and a million there, and it doesn't make a real impact when it could make a real impact if we were more thoughtful. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Connolly. Chair recognizes Council Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The problem, the reason I'm opposing this amendment is because I think that we have a matter in front of us that needs to be voted upon as it is, so that it is legal and sustainable. We're looking for $4 million, right? So that we can receive, we can move this idea forward of two new high schools with the potential of 72% reimbursement. And that's an extraordinary opportunity. These two programs and these two high schools have been on the table for 10, one for 10 years, and another for six years, to find site and pay for a location. So this is an investment in a very sound, potential dual high school right downtown that can affect numerous districts that already are very successful. And when you talk about the school department, Councilor Connolly, we're talking a billion dollars a year. So this is $4 million. There's $14 million that's already been put aside from developers for the Quincy Upper School. And this project is, was supposed to be an onsite renovation and rehabilitation to the tune of $100 million. But now we have a better solution. And we shouldn't attach another purposeful activity or idea to something that could compromise one that's moving forward now. So that's my objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Chair recognizes Council Ayanna Pressley.
I agree with much of what's been said here, and I would just say, whether we're talking about a school assignment plan or a school facilities plan, as an at-large counselor, any decision that I'm being asked to make that supports an investment that is to the benefit of one child in one neighborhood and to the deprivation of another, I will not support. And I'm always going to feel that I'm being put in that position as an at-large counselor when we are making these decisions and not within a larger context. This isn't about musical chairs. This isn't about reshuffling, you know, cards in a deck. These are people's lives. In the same way that we revisited the school assignment plan and parents were clamoring for some level of predictability, how important is continuity? You know, for just the basic stabilization of families and for our children to thrive, I can think of nothing more disruptive than the reshuffling of families. They need predictability. We need predictability when it comes to a facilities plan. And by the way, it isn't just about moving people around. There are things that have to be considered in that design. There are decisions that we made in learning 20 years ago about having open classrooms that are the reason why we have underperforming schools right now, because students can't learn in classrooms that are designed in that way. So there are bigger issues that have to be considered. You know, so this is an opportunity to right an egregious wrong, and that is why I can in good conscience support this amendment. And I don't think that it is in any way mutually exclusive to what is already And I don't think that it is in any way mutually exclusive to what is already on the table and articulated by our colleague from District Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. The chair has a question or two of Council Ross. We have a $4,100,000 loan order that we have to have our first vote today. It appears by the calendar. How does your amendment impact the loan order itself? The Boston Arts Academy is moving, Quincy Upper School. How does your amendment impact that?
It doesn't, Mr. President, negatively impact the, or impact at all, this loan order. The $4 million will still flow. It just simply states that Fenway High remain where it is and that the Allegheny Street School become an elementary school. And I applaud and credit the council from District Two. This is a great victory for him, for all of us, to support. It really is. And this will be an amazing school in Chinatown. But this will allow that to happen without running roughshod over the Mission Hill community. And I think the words "trying to right a wrong" is exactly what I'm trying to do here. I'm not trying to unfairly pick a fight. I'm just, you know, we made a mistake. We shouldn't have passed that last year, and we have a chance to fix it, very simply, with just a paragraph. And that's all I'm seeking to do as the district city council, as the outgoing district city counselor of District Eight, asking my colleagues to allow this. I would grant you the same.
Thank you, Council Ross. Chair recognizes Council Moxie Omo.
Thank you. Just for a couple of quick points, and it's been pointed out that this is $4 million for a feasibility study for the potential move, firstly. Secondly, we've already appropriated the funds to renovate the former Mission K-8 to become Fenway High. If we're going to hamstring Fenway High to remain in the Fenway High BAA building, it will preclude the BAA from expanding over, again, the completion of construction for the joint Quincy BAA isn't until September of 2017. Occupancy, again, according to my memory, is 2015 for the potential Fenway High move to Allegheny Street. So there's going to be a two-year period where BAA will remain in the same building if this amendment goes through with Fenway High. We'll have a vacant high school building, renovated high school building, in Mission Hill with no students. I think that's the logistics of the reality here. So I'm not going to support the amendment. I, you know, I understand your cause, Mike, very much. I think this new facilities plan that is going to be presented at the school committee is including possibly the moving of another course to college from my neighborhood. You know, I'm going to keep an open mind right now, but I'm not thrilled by that. But I think, I just wanted to point out that these logistics create a problem, I believe. You know, hamstringing the next administration, too, to keeping a school in a facility with another school that's scheduled to move by 2017.
Council Yancey wishes to speak on it. Council Ross, would you allow that?
I'll be very brief, Mr. President. I have problems with this amendment because I don't believe we should force high school students to remain in the substandard building, Ipswich Street building. I also have concerns, as I mentioned before, Mr. President, that more than 3,000 people have, not just in Mattapan but throughout the city of Boston, signed petitions to build a high school facility on the Boston State Hospital site. It'll be up to the school committee to decide what schools actually go there. My concern is that by this body ignoring and perhaps even rejecting the idea of building a high school at a location that a previous superintendent of schools said is ideal for high school students, it gives the impression, at least, hopefully erroneously, that somehow there's a bias against the location of Mattapan. Because I can't for the life of me understand why routinely, year after year after year, the administration and this body says no to that particular location for a high school that would be determined by the school committee, and then come back on more than one occasion and say, we can't afford to build it here, but we're supporting a statement of interest to build a high school at a different location in the city of Boston where you don't even have as many high school students that happen to live. So it's a concern that somehow the position and the statement of people in one part of the city of Boston are not taken seriously and are being ignored, or even worse. So I can't support amendment that would say that the Ipswich Street property is appropriate for high school students.
Thank you, Council Yancey. The clerk will call a roll on the amendment. Chair recognizes Council Jackson. The question's been moved by Council Ross, so the clerk, do you wish to speak on? Go ahead.
Mr. President, I just did want to acknowledge through you that I've actually supported the Mattapan High School several times as Council Yancey.
That's a different topic.
Yes, Council Yancey moved it. And so, again, I think the real underlying issue here is relative to an additional high, I'm sorry, additional elementary school at a time when we're moving towards whether or not neighborhoods actually have enough schools in their community. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Ross has moved the question. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote supports Council Ross's amendment.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, no. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, no. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, no. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, no. Counselor Murphy.
No.
Counselor Murphy, no. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross. Counselor Ross, yes. And Counselor Yancey.
The amendment carries seven to six. The question now comes on the amended form of Docket 1599. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1599. Actually, we have to do a roll call on that because it is the first of two roll calls. So the clerk will call the roll on the amended Docket 1599.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley.
Yes.
Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Ross.
Yes.
Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. We have a unanimous vote, Mr. President.
Thank you. Docket 1599 has been read for the first time and assigned for further action back to the committee on Ways and Means. There are two late-file matters which, in absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of a consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. The chair moves, I'd ask all members, the chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for a suspension of the rules to make a brief statement.
Please proceed, Counsel O'Malley.
I just wanted to rise to acknowledge our colleague and our friend, John Connally. He, I was proud to stand with him and by him on a campaign that really exemplified his class and his character. He did this body proud. He did Southwest Boston proud. We obviously all congratulate our mayor-elect, Marty Walsh, who will be a better mayor because of that campaign. So thank you, John.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay. I'd ask all in attendance to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn. The city council shall adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals: For Counselor Siomo, Barbara Mahoney, Richie O'Donnell, and Phyllis H. Smith; and for Counsel Yancey, Phyllis Hazel Johnson. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it will do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, November 20, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The noes have it. The ayes have it. The council stands.